This is a work session. We have two people in the audience tonight. That's good. And everybody's watching on Granicas, right?
Everyone.
Everyone's watching on Granicas.
Everybody is.
Everybody. But needless to say, the snow is melting and the rivers are running almost too fast right now. Did you all have a good weekend, Mother's Day weekend?
Yeah.
It was Mother's Day?
Yeah.
What day was it? Saturday or Friday?
Holy... I didn't know that.
Oh, that was great. It was wonderful to be up at the Bells. It's open and the hiking is phenomenal. Bad news is, it's all snow melted already.
The buses aren't running up there yet, right?
No, they go in June. Yeah, so now, a lot of people, a lot of bikers. But anyway, the trails are great and get out and hike up there before it gets too crazy. Anyway, several items this evening on our work session. Marijuana licensing, the council compensation discussion, Al Creek Road and Brush Creek Road roundabout design. And this is a work session, no more than two hours. Right?
That's how we set the schedule.
Let's do it.
Go for it.
Charles, go for it.
Wait a minute, Clint. You gotta tell everybody you brought your little pot.
I just brought a little pot.
As a sample.
Need to show it to the TV.
I'm sure it's not.
It's been shown. I hope they didn't get my joke at the beginning.
You can't, you gotta let it go. It's not in front of you, Clint. Just a little pot. Something like that.
That's funny.
I got a whole riding team behind me. I don't think it's me. It's a whole riding team. My job is to make sure you don't get in the weeds.
We better keep on moving right now.
We'll find out if it's gonna be a joint decision. We'll find out if it's gonna be a joint decision going forward or not. I can keep going on that. Madam Mayor, please, please have Travis.
I wanna see when you start inserting the word "bomb."
Give me a second.
All right, let's do it.
I'll be careful with that one, too.
Okay.
Oh, man.
So when we last discussed this topic, we reviewed the results from the community questionnaire. I don't plan on going through this presentation again, but it was in your packet for reference. After that meeting, the town council directed staff to get additional feedback from our tourism advisory board. And staff did attend their meeting on April 19th.
Who was there at that meeting?
Oh, boy.
At which meeting?
At the tourism was...
I believe it was five out of seven members. So...
Mike Sera.
Correct.
Mary Harris.
I think Howard was missing, but he emailed in.
Okay. And who else?
I'm gonna have to look that up.
Was Reed there?
He was not. So while I'm pulling that up... From their minutes, they did make an official motion for your consideration, which was that the council continue to carefully evaluate the input from the community and further recommends that the council not oppose allowing retail and medical facilities as long as they are well-regulated and located in inconspicuous locations. So I just wanna point out, they did intentionally leave out some of the more industrial types of licenses.
Right, which is what was in the survey.
Correct. The cultivation, testing, those types of facilities. And they were very specific in terms of retail and medical dispensaries. From here, there are a lot of options for the town council to consider. The only one we kind of outlined in any detail in the packet today was if the council would like to refer the matter to voters. There are some firm deadlines along with that process. And also keeping in mind the moratorium that's set to expire in October. Because of the timing, even if it did go to the voters, we would most likely have to extend that moratorium. So just kind of a couple of dates for the town council to consider. We would recommend bringing any ballot language before the council in July. And then if we wanted to review an extension of the moratorium that is done by ordinance, that would require a couple of... That would require two readings. So probably in July and August. And then John did point out that I had a typo in the packet that the last day to solidify ballot language is not September 9th, it's actually September 7th. So just one point of clarification there.
Is Election Day November 6th, is that correct?
Either that or 7th.
Well, it's Tuesday usually, isn't it?
It is.
So it's November 6th. So then, if, one way or another, if the moratorium was to be extended for that period of time, if it was unumbalted, it would be just that short time, correct?
If you... The moratorium is there... There's three options. The council can outright ban, just continue, take the moratorium and make it permanent, which I'll just call an outright ban. The council can put a framework in place to allow for the sale, and that doesn't need to go to the vote of the people. The council's got that authority to do it themselves. Or you can put it to a vote of the people.
Here, mic on.
Now. Or you can put it to a vote of the people. If you... And if it's... Either way, if you're gonna create a more... If you're gonna create a framework, either through a vote of the people or through council action, our advice, John's advice, our advice, is that we continue the moratorium so that we've got time to create that legal framework, that regulatory framework. Because the moratorium ends at the end of October.
Unless you wanna create it between now and October.
Woo.
That's an option.
What's the timeframe for creating that?
What do you mean? It takes two readings of an ordinance.
Right. But it, I mean, we either do it, if we pass it as a council, the moratorium expires in October, or we put it to a vote and we extend the moratorium for...
It depends on how much time you wanna talk about location. I mean, it's all that regulatory things. You'd wanna talk about where would you wanna... If you were gonna say yes, you wanna do that, you wanna create that framework. The case you would... If you can make that decision quickly, that would be a lot faster. But I assume you wanna take a lot of input on where you'd want to, how many dispensaries you'd want to, that whole public input process. And then behind that, that'd be your kinda job. Behind that, we'd have to figure out the regulatory, the administrative part. How are we actually gonna process licenses? You know, what level of inspections are we gonna have, that stuff? So without doing a whole lot of homework on that, I'd say four months. But that's really not much more than a guess.
Okay.
Yeah, but I think that's pushing it.
It's, I didn't, we haven't...
Yeah.
The big kinda takeaway for us, when we started talking this through a little bit, was it's... If, if, if there's going to be a yes, either from the voters or from the council, we need time to put that framework, that regulatory framework in place.
But here's the thing. I mean, if you say that it's gonna be in... If we approved it and said it has to be in an inconspicuous location, you don't want it at the base and you don't want it at the mall, and it really only leaves the center. And then the landlord in the center, if they don't want, if they don't wanna lease to anyone, they don't have to.
Correct.
So it could be just a moot issue.
It could be. And, but I don't know that you would say that the second floor of the mall is not inconspicuous. And that's the kinda discussion you would all have to decide and give some direction on. Or, you know, whatever. I mean, some other commercial location that...
Well, you have to ask a basic question. Why do we wanna do this? Just because everybody else is? And it could be because you want the tax revenue, but we haven't even estimated what the tax revenue is, as far as I know. Like running the numbers at Aspen, you know, all their taxes. If you applied that with what we think the sales would be here, how much money would be available back to the town? Do we know? We don't have any estimates.
We can guess all day long. I mean, but it would just be that. And if we do a Tabor, if we do a question for a tax, and we add taxes, again, another kinda question that you all have to give us some direction on. Tabor requires us to put an estimate in there of how much revenue would be generated. And we would jump, we would make that estimate, and we would go on the high end, because when you do Tabor questions, you're... The actual revenue should come in below that estimate.
So it would appear to me from before making a decision, or even taking anything to the voters, or doing anything, we need to have some parameters. Because the reason why everyone wanting to do it is because of the income, the revenue that would flow back into Snowmass Village. Well, someone asked me the other day this question. I have no idea, because we haven't done the calculations, because we haven't figured out the assumptions. Right? If you did the assumptions very similar, okay. If the assumptions were what Aspen does...
So I did, like, back-of-the-envelope estimations.
Yes.
Doing exactly what you're describing, where I looked at what percentage of sales compared to Aspen's total sales tax base and applied that to our entire sales tax base. And I would have to pull up the exact number, but I think it was like roughly $80,000 a year.
$80,000 a year?
In Aspen?
No, for us.
So Aspen's percentage of sales would have maintained the same.
So...
With how many shops?
I, I have no idea. I mean...
And 'cause Aspen has a lot of shops.
That's the problem. This is a wild guess. This is, so I think Aspen brings in roughly a few hundred thousand dollars a year.
Right.
They also have like nine or 11 shops.
Sure.
And those are starting to struggle. You know, there's... You know, there's a lot of states that are approving marijuana now. And what was it Gary Suter wrote in the thing that you sent out? Talked about, so market's getting saturated now, so it could be a short-term gain. And another person I was talking to in Aspen, the guy that's doing the center, was telling me they anticipate some of those may go away. I don't know if that's true or not, 'cause I don't know the industry in Aspen.
And that's why it's almost, I mean, if we use that $80,000 number, that is a... That is a guess at this point. It's a percentage of revenue. It's a, it's a, it's a guesstimate at this point.
I think that part of the point, I know I talked with the sales and marketing, who had the meeting, who was the marketing? And I, several weeks ago, and their point was not so much what we're gonna get from the taxes if it's 60, 80,000 dollars. It's what, in fact, we would be losing when somebody goes to Aspen to get something and then they stay in town and have dinner.
That's an assumption.
It's an assumption, but it's a pretty good assumption, though. You know, that, that we always talked about leakage. And that's, that's some pretty good leakage right there. And I'm just referring to, with somebody that mentioned to me.
The leakage was based on a lot of hard numbers, based on surveys, et cetera. There was a lot of groundwork done for that economic analysis. And to simply apply anecdotally, "Well, I need weed, so I'm gonna stay for dinner and a movie and belly up," or whatever. The data's not there, so that's... I mean, you can talk about leakage, but that is a lot more quantifiable than what you're talking about.
That's, that's old, that's that old study, too, about the leakage.
Well, I think it's important to look at the numbers, but it's more important to talk to the lodge owners. And what the lodge owners are saying is they're sending people in vans to Aspen on a regular basis.
That's Mary Harris, is what...
Well, not just Mary. I've spoken to a few lodge owners. And, I mean, that's just the reality of what's happening. So, yeah, we can look at the numbers, but there is leakage. And, and whether the number is 300,000 in Aspen and we say, okay, we can get a third of that here, or maybe it's less. But I mean, still, I mean, those are real dollars. I mean, it's, it's something that we consider. And a lot of people from our survey are saying, hey, this is, this is, should be kind of a moot point. It's already passed in Colorado, it's passed in Aspen. So telling, talking to me, they're saying, you know, just get on with it. But those are just... That's just what I'm hearing.
But it was passed with the ability for municipalities to opt out. So to say it's passed, it isn't, because each community gets to make a decision itself. Okay?
64 passed in Picken County and in Snowmass Village.
The question...
But that question was not, do we want dispensaries in Snowmass Village?
That was not the question. Yes, John's right.
So to answer the earlier question of who was at the marketing board meeting, it was David Dugan, Andy Gunyon, Mary Harris, Christian Knapp, Tim McMahon, Robert Sinko, and Mike Sera.
And Andy doesn't vote, he's ex parte, so he doesn't vote.
Correct. And it was Howard Gross, Reed Lewis, and John Quigley were absent.
And their recommendation was to move forward with this.
To not oppose dispensaries.
With a carry-on.
But looking at the minutes, it seemed like it was much more positive than, let's not oppose it.
You know, sat through that meeting, I think there was, it was, it was a good discussion. And I think they, that, that motion was kinda crafted carefully so that there could be, they could find that majority position. And so "not oppose" was crafted language so that, you know, the people that were, could be, and back and forth.
What was their discussion relative to family-friendly and our values that have led this village for years, is family-oriented?
I don't know that, I don't recall that exactly. But I know, do know that some of the lodge representatives certainly said, "It's already here, so, you know, just, we need to realize that." And then our own staff, town staff, said, you know, "We don't... We would never use that as an anchor for us to advertise with. We would never say, 'Now available in Snowmass,' a dispensary. We would never, that's just, we would continue to focus on our family-friendly. And we wouldn't, this, whether it was legal or not, we would not change our marketing approach at all."
And understand, you can say what you want about it. What you can definitely say is that it's a shift from the prior recommendation of that board, which was not endorsing local dispensaries. It is now moving to, we don't oppose it with the caveat that it be placed in inconspicuous locations. So it's definitely a move from one direction to another. And you can interpret it a whole lot of ways, but that, that's fundamental.
Well, I can tell you, I will not support putting it on the ballot. I think we should expand, I think we should extend the moratorium for two years. Doesn't it have to be a permanent ban? But we've got a new development here. We have a new development here, and we'll probably have something over at the center. I think we gotta let some things shake out before we scramble on this issue. So I'm more on a moratorium. I'm not gonna say no to... We just have so much in front of us. We don't even have a comp plan yet, is one other thing. We've got, we've got stuff in front of us. I'm more in favor of a moratorium for two years. One year or two years. And then once those buildings shake out and we begin to see some ownership and impact of tourism, then...
And the only thing I'd say is, you know, the reason the moratorium ended in October was directly a council direction. So it's not a staff recommendation, one way or the other. This is a conversation, we need to get some direction from you all on, and understand that.
The reason why, you don't wanna slam dunk something like this and make a mistake in terms of the regulatory language. And yes, there's all kinds of regulatory language out there. But most municipalities spend a good six to nine months working on even the regulatory side of this. And those are long meetings.
Yeah. Just working through that timeframe more, I mean, I met with Brian Olson, and we just talked, like hypothetically, if something were to pass in November, we would want probably all of 2019 to develop that framework that we've been discussing. And so, like, the earliest possible door opening on a dispensary would be like January 1, 2020. So I think, yeah, we would definitely...
We need regulatory language, and the impact would be, what additional cost would we incur on behalf of our town in terms of doing all the calculations? That's a finance, probably a finance position or a part of a position. You'd probably have to have a police officer for enforcement. So I don't know.
Well, those estimates in time are taken from the early experiences since this constitutional amendment was passed. And the body of law and the regulatory schemes have evolved to the point that I don't, I personally don't think it would take that long to come to a regulatory scheme, because there is a lot more science to it now than there used to be. It used to be more art, and the state has been very active. They seem to change certain little parts regularly throughout the year. There are similarly situated communities now that have gone through several iterations with tweaks, et cetera. So there is hard data to present to you. There are regulatory schemes that, you know, could be presented rapidly. And I'm not saying, I don't wanna shortchange the public process or your time to deliberate, but gathering that information. I mean, we don't really need to bring Denver's scheme into the realm here.
No, I'm thinking...
We need to look at similarly situated communities and what they've done and how they've handled it. So, and there's, there's pretty much wide open, which I would almost classify Aspen as. And there's, there's more limited, which some other ski towns have. So, and there are other ski towns that, you know, Crestaboot's a good example. Crestaboot, obviously, the city, the town there allows it, but Mount Crestaboot does not. Tell you, riding Mountain Village are similar, Aspen and Snowmass. Breckenridge is a good place to look at. Vail does not allow it. So there's more data out there than there used to be, which I think would... I mean, I'm not gonna argue that it could easily take a year. But I think that might be more public information, comment, testimony gathering, and deliberation than it would actually be putting together frameworks.
Maybe what we ought to do is get some public comments in on this. We did the survey, and that's just one needle, directional needle.
Yeah, again, this is where, normally we come to you guys with a pretty strong recommendation. Here's a path forward, here's how you can achieve that. This is one of those times we really need some direction from you all on how you want us to proceed. All those options are absolutely available to us.
Part of our packet has got all of the questions, which is kinda public comment from the survey itself. And some of them are very interesting. I, I think we need to take a look at this. And I'm not, obviously, we're not voting on anything tonight, this is a work session. But there's, there's been... The survey incorporated a lot of people, visitors to the town, not necessarily voters. And it was, what, 52 to 48%? Now, when we, when we start, if we did a vote, I think most of those people that are 52% that say no are gonna be non-voters.
We did check on, you know, the, I don't remember the percentage.
I don't know what the percentage of that was.
Of full-time residents, there is, we did ask the question, of full-time residents, there was a majority, there it is, right there.
Of the year, of the part-time residents, 71% said no. And of the year-round, 45% said no.
So these were the registered voters, 54 to 46.
When was it that we did the survey? Was it in November?
It was...
November, December, right?
So, so the ski bombs, the ski, or the ski bombs. So people can get into town and get registered to vote as temporary employees?
This was self-reporting. We didn't do checks. Are you a reg, are you a full-time resident?
We did require a name and address, actually. So they kinda had to sign off on their response. And so we filtered out, I think, 40 responses that didn't include a signature. But this is what it looked like with, by residency.
Yeah. And then look at it by age. I mean, it's definitely, like, the older people are, the less willing they are to want it here.
So, okay, so that one vote can't count, because...
I agree. That's why, yeah, we put the numbers up there. I mean, it was similar with guests. I think we only had six guest respondents.
So overall, 301 out of close to 2,000 voters?
Um, I think, yeah, 280 identified themselves as registered voters in Snowmass Village.
About, not even quite 10, it's a little over 10% of registered voters.
Yeah, I think so.
So I think you need a lot more public comment. So I can withdraw my notion on moratorium till we hear more from the public. That's where I am.
I just don't think it's that big a deal, honestly.
Well, I don't, no, you don't, but I do.
That's fine. I mean, that's, but that's just my opinion. I mean, if you look at the, the age range, the respondents, I mean, it's... It seems clear to me the direction that the public wants us to take. And whether we wanna make that as a council decision or put it to the voters, I think is where we're at with this.
Travis, can we put the age league back up again?
Sure.
So you have 166? If you're looking at this for age.
Yeah. And these were just the age groups that we used for the community survey. So, which is kinda how it landed.
66 and...
Which is not an equal distribution, but...
You know, it'd be great to have a whole community forum on this. A community discussion and moratorium versus do it, put it on the ballot? Or you can just make a decision, put it on the ballot, and see how the cookies drop.
That's how I feel about it. I think, you know, we could, we could talk, we could have public comment, and we've had public comment. We've had a survey. We, we've, I think we've spent enough time on it. But maybe we should just put it on the ballot and see how it falls.
I think the other important thing to consider is that we can make any decision that we want, but the commercial operators are gonna ultimately decide for the mall, or Base Village, or the center, or whatever. So, I mean, we can say, yeah, let's go for it, and everybody else could say, sorry, we're not gonna have it.
It could be beyond the operators, too. And we had that where a previous landlord basically said no. So you've got the operators, but you've also got the owners.
Do we know which way the owners of the properties are leaning, other than east-west, as geekle?
I don't know any of, what any of the landlords...
I know the people that are looking at the mall are interested in making money. They said, they're not interested in redeveloping, but they do wanna make money. So...
There could very well be a change of policy if, in fact, the newspaper's correct that there is a... That was, that article was full of caveats. If it closes, hopefully, et cetera, et cetera. So, but the potential is there for a change of policy. I think the, the policy that's in place with the current owner of that part of the mall is that they will not allow their tenants to engage in that business.
That's another one, is we don't know.
No.
But I'd like to see a little economic analysis and really provide some information. And then what kinda timeline we'd be looking at if we're gonna, if it goes to the voters and you can't open a shop tomorrow without a regulatory scheme, and we ought to know the cost. Where are you, Alyssa?
I mean, I just don't, I don't know. I just don't really see where you're really gonna put in this village that's a discreet enough location to make it work. I mean, if that's sort of one of the stipulations, and that seemed to be what the marketing board said, I mean, I just don't really know where you would put it. First, second, I don't think putting one or two pot shops in Snowmass is gonna keep people from going into Aspen. People are still gonna go into Aspen. I mean, if you are coming on vacation to Aspen-Snowmass, you are going into Aspen at some point. Sorry, hate to break it to everybody, but it's true. I mean, whether you wanna go eat at the restaurant, or shop, or walk around, or just see how cute it is, whatever you wanna do, I mean, that's, it's gonna happen. So... to happen. So, I don't know that that's really a valid, valid argument in my mind. I do, I have talked to a lot of parents who are really, really against putting one in Snowmass. And, you know, we keep holding ourselves out as this family-friendly resort. And I'm not saying that pot's not family-friendly. I mean, in a lot of ways, you have alcohol in lots of places and a lot of people compare those two all the time. But I just, I don't know that we want to put that out there. I mean, I'm, I feel like if it goes to a vote, I don't really know what's going to happen. I mean, I think a lot of people that voted no on this survey aren't registered voters. But it doesn't mean they can't become registered voters. I mean, people did it for the Base Village there.
That's for darn sure.
So, I, I don't know. I'm kind of in the middle. I mean, I feel like we've heard a lot from different people. I am curious about the business owners. I mean, there was, on that other screen, Travis, there were sixty-six business owners. Seventy-three percent said that they were in favor of it. I mean, I'd like to hear from some of them. I mean...
Are they business owners? That was a good question, because are business owners here in Snowmass Village or business owners?
That was, that was the question, if they owned a business here in Snowmass Village.
You know, I'm just, that number, that was, seemed high. And I was just curious as to their thought, because the people, business owners I've talked to have said, don't, you know, they're not interested in that. So I'm just kind of curious about that number. But I'm not, I'm not really adamant one way or another right now. I just feel like it's kind of one of those things. I mean, I don't necessarily think we need it, but I'm not adamantly against it. Does that make sense?
Would you be interested in more information? If it's going to cost us more than you're going to gain?
Right. Yeah. I mean, there's a couple of things. I mean, first of all, why would we put ourselves to this whole thing if no one's even going to let it into any of the areas that they own?
Right.
I mean, that's one thing. Two, I mean, can you pinpoint some locations in Snowmass Village that are discreet enough to meet what the marketing board says and how some people may feel?
That's a, that's a good idea.
You know? I mean, if there's no locations that exist like that, then why are we putting ourselves through this?
Well, I mean, I think that the, the center would be that location, was what the marketing board, I think, was, I don't, I can't recall exactly if that was the terms they used. I'd have to go back and read the minutes. But I think that was certainly the notion or the idea that was being discussed.
So if you go, let's say, second floor of the center?
Something like that.
You know, and the landlord-owner says it's okay, you know, that he'd be willing, I mean, how many pot shops are you really going to put up there? One? And how much revenue is that really going to bring in? I mean, there's just, I feel like there's a lot of like unanswered questions. I mean, if there's people that really want to do it because of the money, then what does that really look like? Because I'm not really sure. And I know it's hard to tell in some ways.
It's impossible. It'd be best guessed, and I mean, for tonight's discussion, that eighty thousand is, is as good as any guess. And it could be half that, or, we don't know.
So has anyone talked to Jordan?
No. Again, we're trying to get some direction from you all, and we can do whatever.
Okay, so the three...
We don't want to get ahead, this is one of those projects, we do not want to get ahead of you all. And you guys got to say, here's some things we're looking for.
Alyssa has identified some questions. Very good, is what commercial, what properties would be even interested? If the answer is no, now you got a problem. If the answer is yes, where's a discreet location?
Well, that's for you to decide what's discreet and not.
Well, tell us where they are, then we'll decide that. But I don't even know.
That's, that's, that's a tall order right now with a sale pending on the mall.
Well, that's true. So that hasn't gone through. So you have to assume the same ownership right now.
Well, a potential owner might not want to...
Disclose that.
Pardon?
Disclose that?
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
But would you consider the second floor of the mall discreet?
I don't feel like it's discreet. I mean, all those windows face the mall.
Yeah, but the backside is totally vacant above the shuttle bus stop. And it's...
Like where the offices are?
Back where the, where we used to have ambassador meetings back in that kind of dungeon. But I've heard that that may be developed, that part above the transit they're looking at.
And AVSC was there. I mean, you definitely don't want a pot shop next to that. I mean, there's kids constantly coming out there, little kids. That would not be...
So I, I don't know, we really, we can't be speculative here as what's going where if owner, ownership goes through.
But that, that doesn't mean, you don't have to decide where an owner is going to allow it, because that, that's going to, you, you need to identify where you think it is viable, where it's discreet. If that, if you want to comply with or further the marketing board's recommendation.
But John, if, if Snowmass Center says we are not going to have any business in here selling pot, why do we want to waste our time thinking something discreet up there? But...
I guess you don't.
Same way as Base Village. I don't know what's going on.
Well, I'm not so sure, you know, if, if we, we need, as John said, we, we can't make that decision for these property owners. It's private property. I think the only thing we, we have to concern ourselves with is, are we going to lift the moratorium or not? That's, that's it. Then it's totally up to the private owners. I mean, they could literally put one right next to Clark's Market where the post office is, or the post office be somewhere else. I don't, you know, if that man, the owner feels like...
If you put a criteria on it.
That, that's where his revenue is, he's, he's going to rent that for twice as much.
Well, if we're getting direction, huh?
Well, I'm not saying...
You have to put some kind of discretionary clause in there.
But how could, how could we govern the private property? We can't do that.
Yes, you can. Under your police powers, you have the right to zone. I mean, that's like saying that someone could take the building next to yours and put a twenty-story high-rise. It's not like that.
All right, we have, we have liquor licenses. And we have one at the center, we have one in the mall, we have two of them. How many are total?
Retail?
Retail.
Two?
Two.
Right?
You mean, carryout?
Carryout.
Okay. Because there's a lot of liquor licenses in the mall.
No, I understand. Excuse me. I meant carryout, for retail shops. Okay? So, now, are those owners opposed to any other carryout, carryout shops? And are we only allowing two in the village?
There's no restrictions.
There's no restrictions. So, based upon what people are telling me, because there's, people walk past liquor stores, and kids walk pa, past liquor stores and carryout. And, you know, and it's always been, years ago, if you were on the age, you're always trying to get somebody to buy you a six-pack for something, right? You know? But I mean, those things are going to happen, whether it's a liquor store or if it's a pot shop. So, I, I, I don't know if we could govern what the private, I know we could zone it and everything else, but I, I'm not certain that we, we could, we could control one thing, and that's whether to keep the moratorium in place or put it on the ballot. And at that point, the community then is going to make that decision for us. And where it's going to go, I don't, I don't know how we could govern that if it's private property. If, if the new owners of the mall up in West Village decide that, you know, as somebody said earlier, we want to make money, we're more as in making money, not necessarily renovating the mall.
Yeah, but if the criteria that we establish, it has to be discreet, where's discreet up?
Well, yeah, well, who decides what's discreet?
We do.
We do.
We do.
What does that mean? Like, not on Main Street? The new Main Street that's going to happen at the center?
You could do that. You could say, you know, there's so much traffic in front of it with so many window displays, with signage, that those are all, those would all be that kind of that regulatory scheme or framework that the council would have to develop.
I mean, there's so many, we're going to put so many restrictions on, on where these places could be. There's not going to be any place for it to be.
Well, I, I'll give you a little case history here. Breckenridge is a great example.
Yep.
They kind of went with the anything goes routine. They had them up and down Main Street. And the business owners started complaining, the resort guests started complaining. They changed their zoning, they put it outside the roundabout. So to say that we can't tell them is just patently false. This, this community can zone how they think is in the best interests of the community.
It could also apply, right? They could say, hey, want to have it in X location? And we could say, no.
You know, when I look at the...
Well, John's smalling that question.
You don't really want to do it that way. You want to identify zone districts that are defensible. Because if you say yes to Reed and no to Andrew and this and that, you're, you're not necessarily equitably applying what you've determined is good for the community in terms of where certain types of businesses are located.
So would you say, I mean, if we said no street-side locations? Or we, we could say second-floor locations only?
So, so long as your time, place, and manner restrictions or regulations are reasonable, they're going to be upheld. So you can make a horse, you can make places. There's a lot of different regulations that fall under time, place, and manner. And so long as they are not discriminatory or not rational, et cetera, they're going to be upheld.
And in my opinion, I think council would have that conversation, set those parameters, and then leave it to the market, basically, to decide if the owner wants to allow them, if there's business owners that want to open those shops in those locations or not.
Because it could very well be you're trying to comply with the marketing board recommendation, discreet places. And for example only, I'm going to use the second floor. And there's three floors in the center. The second floor, which is a low-slung hallway, that might be the place where it's almost like a doctor's office. A dispensary would be like that. And you would have to know where it is, and you'd have to go in and get it. And you may find is, when you discuss that, is that the landowners of other commercial, already zoned commercial areas within the town, and business owners that are operating there, they want it too. And then you have to consider the fairness versus the desirability to achieve community values. So...
I have a question, because I don't know this answer. But are there certain regulations when they put these pot shops in about the smell?
Absolute, well, yes. At first there weren't. And now, they literally have to be, I don't want to say hermetically sealed, but closed. Odor is a nuisance.
Right. Because, I mean, it's like crazy. I mean...
Yes.
Sometimes, like you walk down to Five Twenty Grill and you're like, you can't even breathe.
Exactly.
They went through that, they went through that on a large scale down on eighty-two next to Holland Hills.
Right. I mean, it's like when you, you know, it, it's, okay, if the logical place to put is in the center on the second floor, kind of like a medical clinic, and you're walking down that hallway, but what's under that? The grocery store, the post office, restaurants? I'm just, you know?
When you recall, we had, when you had your open forums here, there was a gentleman that was in the industry that testified how their first shop was located within a strip mall. And they were pushing some volume. And the owner, the neighbor started to complain. And so the landlord required them to upgrade that facility intensely to contain all the odor from just the neighbors. So, I mean, those are, those are things that are, odor is evolving. And I would have to say that it, the regulations across the state and at the state level are becoming stronger in that this is okay, but if it impacts a neighbor, a public area, et cetera, et cetera. And in, in the survey, I think there were a couple of comments about, why should I have to close up my condominium and not enjoy my deck because the person next door is, is enjoying there? And it's tough to define, because the state amendment is in public, not in public. Is that public because your aroma perme, you know, goes beyond your boundaries? I mean, there's, there's a lot of tough questions. And there's a lot of localized concern in different places. So, you can address all those in a regulatory, no, I don't want to say all. You can attempt to address all of them in a regulatory scheme. Inevitably, something will change.
And I mean, I guess it just gets back to what I said before, is like, all of this worth it for one pot shop? If that's what you're really talking about? Because what are you going to do? Put five pot shops in the upstairs of the, the center?
If, if, if your concern is people leaving and going elsewhere to buy and then recreate and enjoy their vacations, et cetera, if you have one, that could lead to a pricing policy that drives them away just as fast as non-availability. So, it's something to consider.
You almost have to have two for competition purposes, but still. I don't know. Where do you, where do you want to go?
Home?
You want...
You need to look to your, each of your sides when you ask that question.
I think you really do need to do a field visit to several shops.
A field visit?
Yeah.
Are you being serious?
Oh, yeah. Invite the press and the cameras and tour the pot shops.
Why don't we just put it in Building Six and get it over with?
Yeah, exactly.
Well, you would be the landlord at that point. And that might be problematic.
Just saying. Well, to me, it's a lot of brain. I mean, this conversation alone, we've already been on it almost an hour. We haven't got too far.
We haven't gone anywhere with it.
Other than numbers, what's, you say eighty thousand, okay. What are the aspects of, what type of regulations are we talking about? I haven't spent any time spending my brain.
You know, if you, if, if you want to construct a hypothetical, I think you could do that in seven minutes and give staff direction to contemplate discreteness, time, place, and manner, not necessarily, but those kind of things, what kind of volume you can expect with the seasonality of Snowmass, to come up with maybe something a little better than, than a, a wild guess. Because I think, well...
You're ticking them all off. So, what was it?
No, I'm not. I'm just giving you, I am not at all. I am giving you suggestions of if you want...
No, I'd agree. I mean, basically, you're talking about, it has to be at least two shops.
No, let's say, let's say even one shop.
Right. But then John brought up the whole thing about money.
Then you got the competition.
So, you're talking about one to two shops?
Yeah.
And they have to be in a very discreet location?
Actually, I was talking like three or more, but y'all can put words in my mouth. I was just trying to explain to you that if you do one, it might have the same effect that you're trying, by, by legalizing, that you're trying to avoid of people going, I'm going to Aspen because it's fifty percent cheaper. They're going to Aspen now because it's available. But if you only have one and that person decides, yeah, I only want to work for a few hours a day, and here's the availability, and here's my price, the same result occurs.
Okay. I'm writing down assumptions. One to two shops, not three or four, because they won't make it. Using Aspen's tax scheme? And now you've got to do...
And they don't, they don't have any additional tax on theirs. So the question, you, you guys would have the opportunity...
Don't they, don't they charge more for recreational marijuana? Is there a tax on that? Or they get a percentage?
It's a straight sale, it's a straight sales tax.
They don't have an excise tax.
Okay, that's where I was going. Yeah.
There's no occupation taxes there either?
The state...
But they get a percentage? Huh?
The state charges an excise tax, which they remit a portion of that back to municipalities that have dispensaries.
But you'd have the opportunity, if you wanted to, if you said, you know what, we're going to put this question to the voters. If you said that, then I would strongly recommend you also, you know, put some kind of tax revenue with that, just like most municipalities have. It's like, all right, vote yes on this and yes on that, or no on this and yes on that, however you want.
The people put a tax on. You, you pick a note card and you put it up for vote.
So, you already have the state sales tax on it, and then Aspen gets a percentage? You see how much? I've studied this. Zero. But if you did an excise tax, an additional ten percent?
It, it looks like a sales tax, essentially.
Okay.
Yeah, so the, the state excise tax is fifteen percent?
Yeah.
And just looking at the report that CML put together, the highest additional excise tax is in Denver, and that's fifteen... tax is in Denver and that's fifteen percent on top of the state excise tax. Yes. Most look like they're between two and five percent.
I like that fifteen percent number.
That's like Boulder, Breckenridge, Central City.
Five seems to be the most common number.
Yeah.
For municipalities too.
Gunnison, Northland, all at five percent.
Yeah, it's Gunnison. Go ten. We can be more upscale.
But this would be a decision you would all, if you were to go forward with this.
Okay, put the assumption at five percent. Okay.
Okay.
But now you're going to have to get a volume estimate, how much business would be generated. That's going to be a tough one.
Yeah.
If you give us the hypo that you want, we'll put it together and then you can play with it and understand.
I don't know what type of volume they have.
Doing each one individually and not understanding how they affect each other.
Well, I'm just trying to write down some assumptions so I give up.
Well, I think that's a pretty good start. I mean, what we do know is that Aspen's now collecting more sales tax from marijuana than they are from alcohol. So. Whatever we decide those assumptions are, I think, you know, John's right. Let's, let's just direct staff so we can get some, you know, better information on the numbers.
Yeah, get some, you can get some data from Aspen, talk to Pete and they provide Pete's tracker.
Before you make that bold statement, you're talking about one type of license C for alcohol to compare to weed. So it doesn't include everything that's consumed in the restaurants.
Right, but like you were saying before, carryout stores. And that's the comparison.
I know, but you said alcohol.
Sorry.
I just, I just want to clarify because.
Each one of those stores.
That's a headline and.
Each one of those stores, marijuana shops, have to report their revenue into the city of Aspen.
But that's confidential. The reason that we know that number that Bill just talked about is because they're able to put them all together.
Sector.
In aggregate.
So if you have nine shops and you have twenty million coming in, whatever the number is, that's your, take an average?
Per shop? I think we can do it a lot of different ways. Probably like a proportion of their total sales and we can compare that to ours.
That's, I mean, that's, that's all revenue estimating, guesstimating, whatever you want to call it. Really what we're looking, I mean, if you want us to kind of formulate, John call it a hypothetical, whatever you want, it would be a one or two, one or two, I think is what the mayor said, locations, fine. We could, we could, I'm sure we could craft some kind of language that way. A new tax of five percent to be considered. And then, I mean, really, we, I don't, does that work for you all? And then we, basically we'd be taking steps to be developing a question towards that end. And I want to make sure.
No, I'm not ready for a question for a ballot. I want to know, what is the bottom line? What's it going to bring into our town? What, there's got to be a range because if we're going to spend more money than what comes in, then why are we doing this?
If you give us that hypo, we can go back and look at what happens and come back and say, here's how we got with, with the parameters you gave us, here's how we got to this number, rather than a simple percentage that Travis has used now. And it sounds like you want to understand that economic component of the equation first. So as Clint's going, and I, I think he was on a good path there until he jumped to question because you, you want more analysis before you get to question.
But, yeah.
But you've plugged in to that question, into this formula you just talked about, is five percent. And so that gives you an idea because we'll compare that to other entities and maybe it's a, I, I wouldn't say it would be all Aspen. I think that there's other municipalities that you may want to look at and understand what kind of sales they are experiencing.
That would be fair.
But if, if the range comes back and says, revenue minus expenses is twenty thousand dollars, or revenue minus expenses is three hundred thousand dollars, would that, would it, would either one of those numbers change how you would approach putting this on the ballot or not? And that's why I made that jump.
Yes.
Three hundred thousand, you'd say yes and twenty thousand, no?
I don't know which way I'd.
But I mean, but I mean, if it's, if those numbers don't, that's, I made the jump because if, if twenty thousand to three hundred thousand range doesn't really make a difference, you want to put it to a vote no matter what, then, I mean, it's just kind of, I would just say, let us start working towards that kind of thing. I, I'm not sure that more information is going to, that revenue estimate is going to help you make your decision is all. And if it does, then great. But if it doesn't and, and you're a no for good reasons or you're a yes for good reasons, then so be it. But that's, you know.
Well, Clint, the reason why everybody's driving this is because of the revenue coming in. There's not been anyone that says we just need it because we need to have one here. Every argument that has come out of our mouths at this table and for people in the community was you guys are giving up a lot of revenue. Well, what is that revenue? Just to put it on a ballot.
Well, right, but the other point was the leakage into town and we're not going to solve that problem completely.
You won't solve it.
But all we're trying to do is address it.
I'd like to get some numbers because it could cost us more. Are you going to have to have a police officer for enforcement? No?
If it's one shop or two shops, I mean, that's, with this parameter, we can, I can come back to you with an answer. Will there, I, I am confident in saying with licensing and inspection, there'd probably be another position, whether it be a police officer or not, but we'd probably have to, I mean, it'd probably be wise for us to do that. I mean, just for a general discussion like this. I'm confident in saying that there'll be some staff.
And we have enough staff upstairs that they can handle, and finance to handle.
Well, finance will just be collecting the check. They're not going to go doing the inspection, I assume.
No, but don't they have to do some accounting work in order to get information to the state?
No, I don't think so.
Well, it's, it's an all cash business, isn't it?
Yeah.
Right. So that, you know, it's, uh.
The, the, the staff work that I'm aware of is the licensing and the inspection part, not so much the revenue collection. I don't, I'm not aware of anybody that's added staff for that.
So I have, the biggest problem I have is the discretness of where are they going to be? For instance, if the center goes forward, you know, we've just gone through their sketch plan, that second floor is going to be facing the new residents in the back. So are those people going to be looking at people coming and going back there? So I, I have a problem with the, the discreet part of where the shop would possibly be or shops would be. And if, if they were up at the mall on the second floor, they're facing the Silver Tree or the, the Wildwood or wherever, you know? So we, we're going to be dealing with the discreet issue for quite a while.
What other input on what Travis is going to be working on, where it's clear as mud? Is it clear as mud? Do you think you got it, Deidre?
Yeah, I mean, we'll do some sort of economic analysis to try and kind of refine that estimate and we'll show you how we got there with the extra five percent excise tax. We'll talk a little bit more about the timeline and firm deadlines that we're facing and talk about the cost for developing that framework, what it might entail in terms of zoning, license review process and inspection process. And we'll use a hypothetical of one to two shops where those discreet places in town might be that they could be located and we'll use Aspen's tax base as a comparison for.
And John also had a good idea to some of the other municipalities that are ski resorts?
Yeah, I mean, we have a ton of information at our disposal, so we can put together a few different averages.
Yeah, Mountain Village or Crested Butte might be a.
My sample was Breckenridge, Carbondale, Gunnison, Leadville and Durango.
Yeah, Carbondale's probably not the best.
Okay.
But Breck for sure. Telluride. Does Telluride have pot shops?
They do.
Not in the Mountain Village.
Yeah, I, yeah. It's what I remem- I'm going.
Yeah.
Where is it?
But I think we should also narrow it down too, if we're going to have to add a staff position as well. I mean, that could be a, a real determining factor as well.
On the expense side?
Mm-hmm, on the expense side.
We'll do an estimate on revenues and we'll do an estimate on expense.
Okay.
Good.
Great.
Okay, moving on.
Depends on the regulatory scheme.
Oh, I know. That's why, I mean, it's, this is, that's my, my broader point is, this is a lot of guesswork until we understand what you're aiming for. So as long as everybody understands that. I mean, and the other thing I think we'll commit to, if it's all right with you, Madam Mayor, and the rest of the councils, we'll reach out to the property owners and say, is there any commercial property owner that's willing to consider this? And then you can use that information in your decision as well.
That would be very helpful.
Great. Thank you.
And, and, and people can change their minds and all that kind of stuff. It'll be a point in time kind of question.
June, meeting?
Well, don't set a time. Soon as we can, for sure.
We'll be back.
Because I mean, you guys are, if you do decide to put it on a, on a ballot, we, that's, that's the, you guys would eventually have to give us direction. We'd eventually have to form a question and you'd have to approve that ballot language.
Well, what's the deadline for the ballot?
Ninety-eight days.
It's, it's August.
It's a new staff report.
It's August.
But based on your timeline here, we would need to review ballot language July ninth.
That was our recommendation just because, you know.
Why does it have to go in the twenty eighteen ballot? Could it not go twenty nineteen?
Absolutely.
It's nothing magic. You just extend your moratorium one year and while you.
In nineteen, you couldn't ask a tax question, that's for sure.
You can in twenty though.
In twenty, you could.
Okay.
And I say that because Tabor only lets you ask tax questions, tax questions on your regular election time, which the rest is November, even November years.
Take care of Tabor. Yeah.
Got a load.
I just happen to know that one, that if you're going to ask a tax question, it's got to be basically when the council's being elected.
Darn it. Okay, next was the compensation issue. It's on page forty-seven.
Uh, this is another topic that the council asked us to prepare some information on. Rhonda put together the staff report and she's out of town today. But you asked, there's two documents to look at, but one, the first is the summary of the last report and this report. At the last discussion in February, the council asked for what the total cost would be if the increases, the proposed raises were put together up to the twenty-four hundred dollar, up, up to the twenty-four hundred dollars per year. Twenty-four hundred dollar raise is put together, that's ninety-six hundred dollars per year. And then there's also discussion about including a five hundred dollar per month stipend for insurance. And that was in response to kind of how the city of Aspen provides insurance for its council members. We had the discussion back and forth about being eligible for the town's plan. That was more expensive than this for sure. And so I think the council provided a direction to say, well, you know, how about five hundred dollars a month? And so you can see that arithmetic was pretty simple at that point. Came down to thirty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars per year. The caveat is, you know, that the, if the council wanted to do this, you need to do it by ordinance and then no council can, no council member can vote themselves a raise essentially, that's in the charter. So they have to be phased in over the course of two elections. So if you were to pass this ordinance before this next election, whoever's elected after November would benefit from this increase, but I think you two would not, Tom and Alyssa would not, those, those seats would not until those seats are up for election again. And so really what we're looking for you is, we've got the numbers, we've got the, the fiscal impacts. And if the council wants us to draft that ordinance, then we can get busy on that and you'd have to act on that ordinance.
Comments?
I think it would be helpful. It would certainly encourage more people to participate. So I'm in favor of it.
I didn't know we got paid.
Judy does, so.
By the time you read all these council packets and you divide the hours you put into it.
I said, I don't know we get paid.
That's the same way I feel about the ambassador program.
The, um. The salary comparisons, Clint, on the additional benefits, is that, is that now? Is that present or is that what would happen? Like you have employee rate discounted passes the way it is right now? Is that what we, do we have employee rate discount?
This is information that Rhonda gathered from CML or CAST. I can't remember which, which source she used. One page was CAST and one page was CML.
Have the chamber rate for a ski pass.
Yeah, currently there's the chamber rate. We can, you know, is it, but this, if you're looking on page fifty-one to fifty-nine, is that what you're looking at?
I'm looking on, I don't know what, you know.
Some other.
Correct, fifty-one to fifty-nine, yeah.
So, uh, this, this was, I, I believe from CML. And if it wasn't CML, it was CAST. But it was just how they tried to, you know, they tried to quantify additional benefits and this is where the insurance discussion started with last time.
Now, I'm, I'm in favor of it too. As Bill said, you know what? Getting, not necessarily more money, but getting more people involved, there's, there's, they're going to look at a fini- what, what's in it for me? And if they see the financial package, then maybe, maybe some people will be willing to take the extra step and go forward and help the community. I don't know. I mean, we have a hard enough time with the voluntary boards. I, I almost think some of our voluntary boards need to be paid, like planning and zoning. And, you know, I know our design boards are, they, they get paid. Don't the design board to get, I thought they get paid.
Town boards?
No, not the town.
He's talking about the homeowners association.
Oh, I don't know.
Yes.
homeowners association, I don't know.
Right. They, they get, I know they get paid. Anyway, I'm in favor of it and I'll just leave that alone at that point.
I'm perfect with it. I think it's a good move. Good move for all the time that this, this wonderful volunteer, kind of a volunteer job takes on everyone's schedule. It's, it's tough. Okay.
So the consensus at this workshop session is to direct staff to prepare?
Yep.
In ordinance.
In ordinance. Okay, that took three minutes.
It balanced out the previous discussion.
I'm, I'm working on, on your request.
Let's get home and watch Dances with the Stars probably.
Go to church.
Oh, Ann is here. So, Ann, you want to come on, on up? This is Owl Creek Road and Brush Creek Road Roundabout Design update.
Six?
Yes.
And where's that chart?
Is this served with cocktails?
No. The kid, he can't be there.
Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
Good. I have Ryan Gordon here. Sorry. Hi, Ryan, how you doing? Good to see you again.
Well, how are you?
Good. Yes, I'm coming. There we go. From SGM, he is working as our consultant, town, town engineer. Dean is in the process of retiring and Ryan is stepping in those shoes. So he is working on several projects that we have going on within the town. But as I mentioned about a month ago, that we have started the design process that was budgeted in two thousand eighteen budget to do design work for the Brush Creek and Owl Creek Road intersection. And basically we are approximately like twenty percent design. And the goal is to have more, I'm going to back up in the image, to have a goal of more firm numbers when we go into budget process in June and July. But the end product will be to have final design by December. So there's several elements throughout this whole process. So a couple of things, we have two images that were included in your packet. One is to talk about the intersection, kind of revisiting this conversation that was discussed back in two thousand, I think fifteen, when we were talking about intersection types, stop versus stop with a free right, or they call it in here a zoom lane, the signal control and then the midi or midi roundabout design. And then there's the, with the bypass and then the full size. And so we were going to talk through some of those elements just to refresh your memory on those. But basically it was pretty loud and clear that this is not a discussion item when we went through the last roundabout discussion. And so that's where we've been working on design based on the preferred alignment and with the restriction that we have in space in that intersection. So in the midi is basically what we're looking at. And the two key elements to look there is the level of service of just putting in a roundabout at the intersection and then putting. And the two key elements to look there is the level of service of just putting in a roundabout at the intersection and then putting back. That, that's that question you may get asked of, well, we had a free ride at one point and it went away, and why are we putting it back? And this is the reason for that discussion, is that it increases that level of service at that intersection to have level of service A. And so that's the design they're working on. I don't know if you had any further questions on this slide itself. There's a lot of numbers.
So with the, down there, where is this? Ninety-five percent queues? And over on the mini with, with bypass, eighty-one feet. What are we talking about the feet on each one of those? Eighty-one, what? Feet of, from where to where?
Right, so that, that basically is describing the, the length of the queue that we, that would be potentially backed up in the roundabout, to, to enter into the roundabout itself.
Okay.
So this, I believe, is the northbound like, so it's, it's kind of confusing. But basically, if you had that free right, it would allow less cars to stack as you're coming down. So it's northbound because it's the north leg of the intersection. But if you didn't have that, you'd have a longer delay coming down, longer queue length of cars. So.
I mean, just in English, what, a car's fifteen feet? Call it twenty feet for easy math.
Twenty feet, yeah.
So four cars queue.
Yeah.
Basically.
What's the, can you just, so I understand, the sizing of the roundabouts we currently have?
Yep.
Can you tell me what those are compared to what's up there?
So let's go to that image, and we'll talk through that. So one thing I think would be helpful as we go through this is Ryan and Evan talking about, you know, these talking elements that would help you to explain what we're looking at. And we've started gathering that information as they go through design. But we'll probably, what I thought would come out of this is maybe we need to put together a table, you know, the talking points, so that the project has a summary of it. So in comparison, this design right here is looking at an eighty-seven foot outside diameter, and the inside diameter was thirty. Is that what we came up with? Yeah.
That's correct, yeah.
This is for the mini.
And then for the midi. And so Brush Creek and Wood Road was seventy-foot diameter, and that's not, it's the drive-around diameter going across the intersection. And outside to outside is a hundred and fifteen. So that gives you a, kind of in your mind, how much that is.
Just say, I'm sorry, say that again. So it's basically seventy to a hundred and fifteen?
Yep.
Would be the apples-to-apples comparison?
Yep. And then the mini roundabout, just to get that in your mind, is twenty-foot diameter with a fifty-foot outside to outside.
Bob's Roundabout? Is that the one you're talking about?
Is that what you call it? Is that the name of it now?
Oh, everybody calls it that.
Is that the?
Bob's Roundabout. My dad loves that every time. Going around Bob's Roundabout.
Okay. Didn't, I haven't heard that one yet.
Is how many feet?
It's, um, twenty-foot is the inside, like the part you drive around, you're, or over-
Drive around or you go over the top?
Yeah, right. The part that's striped. And then the outside is fifty-foot. And that's just kind of general. I did some scaling. So that's why we're calling it a midi. It's in between the mini and the main roundabout. The, just so you know, the Down Valley, the one at High Line and Brush, is not a great comparison because it's got more footprint to spread out. So that was a lot larger. It was ninety and a hundred and thirty-six. So that ninety's bigger than even the one up here.
So with this one, can raft, raft the buses and our town buses and get around? And also, um-
Semis.
Those, yeah, semis.
Yep. So that's what, some of the design criteria that Ryan and his crew are working on is working on those turning radiuses and what this looks like. You know, is it a midi that you drive, or a mini that you drive over? Or is there some kind of hard surface and what it looks like?
And the two bus stops, the Owl Creek and the northbound bus stop, is there, is that a walkway between them? That kind of stops and goes down the path?
This is, this is a crosswalk?
No, but come on back to the Owl Creek, yeah, right where your cursor is right now.
That's a crosswalk.
That's a crosswalk, but come down to the bus stop for the shuttle bus.
Yeah.
There's nothing connecting the, that bus stop to the Brush Creek Road bus stop.
So that is one of the elements we're looking at, is, you can see this line right here?
No, right, but, you know, we, if you, and you drive on Owl Creek up that way as well as I do. And you always see people walking back to Anderson Ranch on the road, past the firehouse. And, and it's, it's always, I don't know.
Walkway connecting to your bus stop.
We're very lucky that we haven't had an accident.
Oh, so this bus stop?
Right.
Yes.
This, is this what you're talking about?
Yes.
Yes. We're looking at that as a walkway. So, um, and granted, we're at twenty percent design, so there's things that we're still trying to fit in. But what we're looking at is taking the path, this is existing, and then taking it and wrapping it around to connect to the bus stop here. So this is that bus stop we're looking at as far as the Route Three bus stop. And then that's that connector to the regional bus stop because that's commonly used, as you are aware of.
Right.
To connect to the system, as well as even if they wanted to come across.
Currently, you got people who are trying to make a left-hand turn to go up to the village, and people are walking from, you know, from Anderson Ranch to the bus stop. And it's, it's, it amazes me sometimes that we haven't had-
A lot of activity. Yeah. So that is the elements we're looking there as far as pedestrian.
Good.
The other element we're looking at as pedestrian, and Ryan, you want to talk about this, but the bike path in the existing situations?
Yep, yep, certainly. So, so the existing bike path, as you see, wraps around and does that, that switch back. And it's, you know, quite, quite steep through there.
Steep, going down.
Certain areas are up, upwards of, of eighteen, nineteen percent. That area, basically, that whole area that Ann is sort of dragging your cursor along is anywhere between, you know, twelve, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, up to the eighteen percent, quite steep. We're looking at relocating at least a leg of the, of the trail, as Ann is, is showing you. It, it, it's not flat, but we're looking at about a twelve to half, twelve and a half percent slope. So we're making the bike path a, a, a less steep bike path. We've looked at and can certainly look at in the future of, of making it a, a lot less steep, say, five or six percent. But, but the ramifications of that is we are now going to have to switch back across that, that slope, that face of that slope, which we are, any switch pack, we're likely going to have some amount of walls, whether they're boulder, rock, or chaining walls, or vertical concrete walls. But there's just no getting around it. But I think given, you know, what we're sort of showing here, and we're certainly fine tuning it, we are improving that slope, you know, uh, you know, pretty substantially.
So are we talking about taking out Ben Rollins's garden there?
I don't think we need to. I think we, we will be able to incorporate that.
No, I think it's, this is, so you're talking right here, this is that current ditch, just to show you, is the consummate corner, as some people call it. This, it would be taken up by that-
Right.
Right, turn lane, yeah. But just like Ryan mentioned, is when we go through this, is, right now, we're looking at the hard surface things. Then we need to look at the landscaping part of it, and how do you incorporate some of those elements back in to soften it? Because that message has been very loudly heard that, how to mirror the improvements with making it fit into our environment. So there could be some offsetting of, you know, garden in here or something of that sort.
So you are moving or you're not moving the garden?
The garden would be gone.
Ooh, that's such a pretty garden.
It is, but I think, you know, there's plants in there that can be transplanted. We can look at how do we offset those things to incorporate them in some of these elements here.
Fair to say it's different. I mean, you say gone, like, it's like, oh, it's not going to be there. It's just going to look different.
It's going to look different.
We're going to have landscaping planned to be on that corner.
Exactly. Yeah.
But the garden really could get pushed up the hill.
That's what I'm trying to get to.
It's different, not-
Sorry, bad choice of words. Relocated.
Yeah.
So, I mean, some of it's here, right, that garden, you know, here's the, the tighter, the purple lines is the steeper the grade in there. So this is where it's, you know, starts to fan out, where the garden's at, where my cursor is. There is some areas here, and then there's still some areas here, and we can incorporate those relocation of elements.
I would push that garden up a little bit more into the hillside. And so when you come down on your bike or you're walking, you're having a garden experience-
Right.
On either side, which I think would be lovely.
And those are things we can look at and how to, and terrace that in there.
Oh, that's a great idea.
Because that area is pretty inaccessible now. I mean, I, I mean, it's a beautiful spot, but it's hard, I mean, you can't really get there. It's not a great location.
It's not, it's not active. It's very passive.
Yes.
So some of the other elements that we talked about, in, included in this design, is we've got the improvements that we need to do as far as the culvert in this. Let me see, next page here. So this shows the stream, and there is an existing pipe underneath the roadway, seventy-two inches, is that it?
That's correct.
And right now, it ends right at the edge of asphalt. I mean, it's not very much shoulder in that area. As well as the creek comes through a culvert here, and this is where you, the residents from Seasons Four walk across that. You don't even notice you're going over it unless you look to the sides there. And then the stream comes in, and it pretty much hits this timber wall that's existing right now, this line right here. And we would like to, and we need to do some maintenance as far as this culvert. But while we're doing that, we were looking at the possibilities of allowing, do we have enough elevation in there to allow pedestrian and bicycle access underneath instead of it just all being at the surface? So that's what this design is showing here, is putting in, they're looking at a couple of elements. One is a bridge. The other one is what we call a box culvert, and would have a paved trail underneath it, and they're looking at those cost estimates. The other thing that's going on in here is we have utilities, and so there's a major water line that runs down Brush Creek Road. And in talking to the district, is that that water line needs maintenance and to be replaced, basically. So that water line currently goes underneath this pipe. And if we go to do these improvements projects, the district would either include in their project the replacement of that water line as our part of our, you know, the project scope, or we would partner with them on that project. So there has been conversations, and you want to talk about some of the other utilities that you've been working with?
Yes, yes. So today, we've reached out to, you know, gas, electric, fiber, telephone, as Ann mentioned, the water and sand district. And all of them have, well, I say all of them, the majority of them have some element of, of their system in this general area and have all expressed interest in either upgrading and or relocating their facilities. And I, I think everybody recognizes that doing any construction work in Brush Creek Road is extremely difficult. And if you have a project sort of this scope, and that, everybody's trying to piggyback on this. So we've gotten a lot of, uh, people reaching out and saying, yes, if you go through with us, let us know because we have various stuff. As, as Ann mentioned, the, the most concrete work so far is the water line, certainly. It's, it's very deep, sixteen feet deep, and is, is recognized as the oldest water line in town, and it's constantly leaking, doesn't have valves that work. So the district is very interested. And like I said, Holy Cross and at least Comcast has reached out and said, yes, we definitely have things that we'd want to do in the area. So I think there's a lot of agreement from the various utility companies to, they would be very interested in, in participating.
The other thing that SGM has been working on is contacting the Army, Army Corps of Engineers. And because of this work in here with either re, installing the pipe in there, or even if it was to be a lining project of that pipe, we'd be putting in structures to help shore up the roadway here on both sides. So they've reached out to them to start that conversation. This, right now, is not an ideal situation where the stream is coming and basically hitting an old timber wall. We would want to put in more permanent structures to help support this bank on both sides. But those things won't be as visible from the roadway because you're driving over those things. They're basically the understructure to help support what's there.
So if you do that under thing, is it like the one at town park?
Could be. Yes, that's a box culvert with the poured concrete in the bottom.
Yeah, that's nice.
Yeah. So the other thing we're looking at is how, it's not, this is not intended to replace pedestrian access at the surface. It's just to provide another option because there is pedestrian access that needs to get to the bus stops. As you pointed out, was the, this connection here on the sidewalk, but also to get, you know, you see the pedestrians all moving quite often, in many different directions. I don't know exactly where they're all going. So we're just trying to provide those safe elements of those crossings, you know, with an island refuge in here to get across, you know, and allow to get it into the next leg. Right now, what we're thinking, and we're just going to bounce this off and see what you all think, is there is a lot of grade in here that we're dealing with. And so if this is underneath the roadway, we're looking at this path coming up and connecting to the Mayfly Trail. It may be a vertical stair at some point, and I don't, we don't know yet. We have to work on the grades on how to get up here. But it wouldn't be like a switchback. It wouldn't be ADA compliant, just because there's too much elevation gain to get there. And then this connection may be over the trail, and maybe some kind of pedestrian bridge to connect from coming down instead of going down those stairs and then going across. But it may be actually an aerial type of connection from a landing and then coming across and connecting to there. Because that's the desired path, is to get to the transit system.
Eliminate the culvert, is that what you're saying?
Good. That's an option. Because that's how they're, that's what it's being used right now. But, so we just, there's so many grade elevations.
It's got a lot of moving parts.
There is. And that's why we're only at twenty percent. So. But I wanted to tell you where, what we're looking at, so you understood. And if you have questions that come up, you can, you know, guide us as we need to provide more clarification. The other thing is, it's kind of been a question, is how far is this project going? And so that's why we threw this up here, is to basically look at the limits of the project. And I don't have a really great reference point. We can overlay this on an aerial here in the future, and that might help some of that. But basically, it is allowing us to meet the grades that we would need to come in here safely. And you got to refresh me, what were we looking at downhill was?
Right. So if you're coming from, from, uh, basically up Brush Creek, we're coming up at about, about, about six percent, then transitioning into four, and then two percent across the roundabout itself, which matches very, which matches actually exactly what the roundabout is up here at Brush Creek Wood Road. Is it two percent across, and that's what you want, as the most, most you want. And then coming out of the roundabout and then going back up the hill, we do the same sort of transition, except we go two, four, quickly through six, and then up to about eight and a half percent. And, and the reason why we did that, and then we're going to tie into Brush Creek Road at about a six and a half percent. But it's really that fine-tuned playing of, if you have shallower grades, you are chasing an uphill grade, and so it extends how far you have to go out. So we're trying to marry, keeping as compact as possible and trying to keep your slopes as, as shallow or as less steep as possible. So there's that little interplay of where, where we are right now. So that's where we're sort of looking at right now. But the real key transition there is to make sure that, number one, we have the correct grades across the roundabout itself for safety and, and turning. And then the grades coming both in and out of the roundabouts are pretty critical. So that four percent is held at all three legs.
So then that also leads into this discussion, is what they're working right now is this balancing act of how to fit it in there and how far that limits is. Because then you have a tie-in point here of the chapel driveway. So we'd say that this is our match point out there, that we need to make sure we match without having to change the grades of the driveway going into the Anderson Ranch Chapel complex. So that's the balancing act that they're working on right now.
What's the feedback from the fire, firehouse, anything?
They are supportive of this because they do not like the situation they're having right now of level of service F at this intersection with the stop sign. So when they were going through their design process of their fire station, they were well aware that this was a potential bus stop in the future, right here at the entrance between the chapel drive, and basically the bike path comes right here right now. So they, that was included in some of their sketches even of their building permit, even though they weren't constructing it, but they included in their review. And then they know that this would be the, the design here, so that they would be able to make that left turn.
How long, oh, sorry, how long does this take? I mean, in comparison to like, I mean, once you're doing the construction, like, compared to this roundabout up here?
So I'm going to say an off-the-cuff answer.
I'm just curious.
So we don't know which year this is, so that's why we're working on budgeting. We're trying to figure out that number, so then we can look at funding sources and construction schedule. But I would say it's very similar to this project out here in the sense it would be a year construction, and then the follow-up year would be the tidy up landscaping or some of those elements that are not vital infrastructure.
What sculpture's going to go in there?
Yeah, maybe we should start now.
So we don't know what that inside looks like right now. I can tell you the diameter. But that's one of the things they also work on, is taking a truck turning radius program and looking at those, and the question you had about the truck movements and the, and is this drivable or is it raised?
And, and, and just to add a little bit, it, it, it's probably not likely we can put something of value in the middle.
I don't think so.
And I say a value would be a piece of artwork that could get hit. Given, given our strength, constraints of Brush Creek and the various elements, you know, all, all, all of what you see, so the red demarcations and then the gray, are not intended to be sort of- are not intended to be sort of solid surfaces, they're, they're mountable curbs and whatnot. In order to get, say, the raft-a bus coming up Owl Creek can go around the roundabout and come back up, they're going to have to use, maybe not the whole intersection, but portions of it, so.
They're going to have to drive over.
Yeah, yeah, so unfortunately, I, I don't think a, a nice piece of artwork is going to be able to fit in this, this roundabout.
I'm not even sure, a tree.
Well, you'd want a tree that, that, yeah.
That has moved, that moves?
Yeah, that's right. Even, and a robotic tree that can move out of the way at certain points or something. But again, those are very, we're very early in the stage, so we haven't quite figured out exactly what that looks like.
But to Tom's point, I think the fire station has come out strongly for the roundabout, right? Because they're concerned about the, the backup of the traffic in front of the fire station. Just from our experience on the EOTC and putting underpasses in the proposed Brush Creek Trail structure, I mean, that sounds like it would be a pretty expensive underpass.
Yes, it's a large element. I mean, and it, it could be, so I mentioned box culvert, the other one is it could be bridge. So it could be, you know, retaining wall in here, and then.
Could be an EOTC project.
It could be, and you could put in a bridge and not build the path.
Maybe we need a mobility study.
That's the evaluation that's going on, Councilman Addison, right now is, I mean, it could be cheaper because we got to get this water line in, and it might be cheaper for the district to participate in a bridge or a box culvert, rather than just the pipe.
I mean, a sixteen-foot-deep water main right now, there's not too many track holes that are going to be able to dig that up or replace it.
What was our conversation was they would prefer to have the bridge so they could actually hang that water line under the underside of it.
Right, right, their perspective, as, as you correctly mentioned, is if we leave the situation as is with, with the culvert, that means their pipe basically stays sixteen feet under. And it is, that is the least desirable path forward for them. So I think either a box culvert or a bridge is preferred to them because it raises that whole water line up to more, to their standards, so about eight feet deep. So I, I think there's no question that is preferable to say the least.
There was a water, I think they said it was a fiber problem underneath the wood bridge itself this past April or something, where, but one of the curb boxes you could see water pouring out of. So would that water main that they would replace, would it go all the way up the street? Or what updating part of the water main would be replaced?
That, so that valve, so just correct a couple of things, that, two spots that are tore up underneath the wood bridge was telephone.
But there was water coming out of one of the curb boxes up there.
Right, and there is water that comes up out of several curb boxes that is not domestic water, it's the groundwater.
Oh, so just finding a port to come out.
You got it, so it's finding its spot to weep out. We would have to determine that, so right now, I'm sure, I'm thinking, and I did talk to Kit about this and explain this project to him, I think they would go from the limits of our project. He said he would go, he would like to replace as much as possible, but they're also have to work on their budget side of things. So I'm thinking it would not extend further than the project limits.
Okay.
And what, just construction-wise, what they would do is they would abandon what they have and lay a new line.
Sure.
So it would be offset into a new location, a different elevation, that's kind of what they would anticipate. But we're still really in the conceptual design phase.
Now, is that, is that the main that goes up, that's the main that goes to the base village? So it's probably a twelve or sixteen-inch line.
Yeah, I believe it's a sixteen-inch cast iron that was installed, you know, in the early seventies.
They would replace it with C nine hundred or something, or?
Yeah, they'd do, do the latest and greatest, whatever the best is. Probably a plastic pipe, given the corrosivity of the soil.
So one thing I think we'll do is we'll come back in the budget process, I mean, I know we will, and give you more numbers as they move along with some of these design elements. The other element that I think would be beneficial is we'll start working on, when they get further in design, some cross-sections so that you can kind of see what it looks like as you approach the intersection, go through the intersection and come out of the intersection, so it's more of a, not all these engineering lines, but more of what do you see when you're coming through that area?
This is one heck of a complex project.
It is.
Is there anything that we're missing that, I mean, as far as questions you have?
What color paint?
Final price tag?
I don't have that yet.
Yeah, why is this complex?
That's going to be the hardest part, is the price tag.
So if people, that, where it says Mayfly Trail, right next to that, that's the connection coming down from Seasons Four?
This right here is the connection.
What's that other thing?
This?
No, over.
Where?
Right, that.
This?
Yeah.
That's that low area, so when you walk down the Mayfly Trail, so right here is like the Mayfly Trail, there's kind of like, there's a retaining wall here, and then there's like a platform area that you step down, they did some stream restoration work.
A couple picnic tables there?
Yeah, like fifteen years ago, about. That's that low area, that's what that grade is, it's just kind of a flat grassy area. And then the trail continues on like this.
So if you're on that side of the road, to get over to the other side, you have to walk all the way down to the other side of the roundabout and cross?
It could take either this underneath, or we need to look at trying to get up grade-wise, and that's where I don't have that in my head yet either, is what does this elevation look like? Because right now, you can pop out right here and meet grade, that's how you get on the Mayfly Trail.
Right.
So is that elevation still available, or do we, is there like some sort of staircase to get into here to get up to this grade? That's what we need to work on. Okay.
Yeah, I think an overpass, pedestrian overpass, would probably be the least desirable.
This one here?
No, over Brush Creek.
Agree.
Well, that's going to be there no matter, that's, that's a critical, because that's the transit connection.
Oh, this one right here?
No, 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 but, but a bridge compared to a box culvert.
This part is a bridge?
Right.
Let me make sure you got it.
You're missing the connection here.
Yep, so here's your stream, and the road is here, it's like this, you won't even notice the bridge.
We're not talking about a pedestrian overpass.
Nope, we're not talking this way, we're talking underneath. So basically, what it would look like is, it would look like a Wood Road Bridge here. The road goes across, the road goes across, and instead of having a culvert there that we can't get to and the water's going through, it would be underneath the bridge of the road, it would have the stream on one side and a path right next to it.
Gotcha.
That's what it'd look like. And if it's not a bridge, it may be a box culvert, like Alyssa was talking about down at Tom Bark Station, same type of thing of the stream is going in there and the path is right next to it. And where is there an example that, that box culvert with the stream right next to it?
It's a good question.
Was there one in Carbondale? I'm trying to remember. We have an example, maybe we'll get some pictures.
I can see what you're talking about.
So it's not, the road is going over.
The Rio Grande Trail down by Cemetery, whatever that, what road that is. It's not a full box culvert, but there's a stream and a pass.
Slaughterhouse Bridge down there?
Yeah, yeah, Slaughter, yeah, Slaughterhouse.
I'll have to take a look at that when we get some pictures. So those, so that's where they're looking at the different elements there, so it's not going over, it's under.
Gotcha.
This is the one we were looking at going over to get the pedestrians to, coming down to get to this grade right away. I, I know it's very vertically challenged into, because I'm still trying to figure out how that all ties in. So I think some pictures would help in that, articulating that.
Well, it's a challenging intersection, that's why it needs to be fixed.
Well, thank you, it's well done, thank you very much.
Appreciate it, yeah.
We look forward to next pictures.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. What else do people have tonight, anything?
Friday's town cleanup.
Yeah, I have a conference at Beaver Creek.
Starts at nine?
Nine.
What's that?
Town cleanup.
Town cleanups.
Oh, yeah, I'll be out of town.
I'll be in Beaver Creek.
I am going to miss this one, this is the first one I missed.
I'm going to go. Are you going to Cincinnati?
Going to see Betty Ann.
Nice, oh, great. I, yeah, I'll be, I'll be there, there's no school that day in the elementary.
Really?
Yeah, it's an assessment day.
Okay, I guess we don't need a motion because, nope, we don't have to have any motions and we'll do updates.
No motions to be had.
Cheer on Jack.
I will miss the fourth, fourth and the eleventh, June.
Jackson.
Barb, I will be missing June fourth.
Sam.
June eleventh.
June eleventh will be canceled.
Oh, it is, okay.
Because there wasn't enough of us that were going to be.